Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, meeting of the New London Planning Board. We'll go ahead and get started. We don't have minutes to review tonight, so we will jump right into the public comment section. Just one quick reminder, before we do, we are recording video and audio these days. So this is the part where I ask if anybody has something that they like to talk about that is not on our agenda tonight. Anyone fit that category? Okay, seeing no hands, we will jump right into our first agenda on our list tonight, which is talking about zoning amendments. We're going to talk a little bit about residential R2 setbacks.
Do you mind if we do floodplain first?
Oh, yeah, we can do floodplain first, yeah.
So we'll do the easiest one first, because we get the least amount of say in this, and we'll tackle the floodplain. So as I think most of you have heard already, FEMA is working on updating the floodplain maps in the Kintookuk watershed. So for us, that's a portion of the town, mostly the Pleasant Lake side of town and what flows through Pleasant Lake. As a part of that, they have done a comprehensive review of our zoning ordinance at the state level for the floodplain, and we are required to essentially adopt as a town into our ordinance the floodplain regulations that are stipulated by the FEMA and then flow through at the state level in order to stay in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. So as we've gone over this a couple of times, they've added in some different language. There's going to be a base flood elevation now with these new maps. They anticipate the maps should hopefully be adopted sometime next spring. That's on their timeline when that happens. And so as such, we need to make some amendments to our floodplain regulation. They have given us that language. You'll see it up on the screen in the yellow and red. We don't have much choice. We have to go through the town meeting process for this, but it needs to pass in order for us to maintain compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. So I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Peter, can you come up? Yeah, thanks.
Evening, Peter Nichols. I just have a question about the substantial improvement definition. I don't really understand why the definition has changed. I'm not a lawyer, maybe I'm just missing something. It's in Section 159, the yellow change, and then you deleted 160, but it sounds to me as if they're pretty similar in many respects. It's 50% of the assessed value or market value of the structure. Maybe you can just walk us through it, so we understand it.
Maybe. Bear with me for a second, Peter. You know, I'm not sure that there is a truly substantive change to the language, Peter. It does seem like they have pretty much included the same information in a different format, the way that they have it presented. The numbering is changing because there's one being deleted up above, but...
Isn't it just their text versus our text?
Yeah, I mean, it could be that they've updated their internal definition, and so now we just need to match that. Sorry that I don't have a better answer for you, Peter.
It's not significant that it's not in order.
Yep. I will say that in general, substantial improvement is really a tedious thing to track, but it is cumulative. Over time, we usually engage the state when we have a project that requires substantial improvement in the floodplain, because it's... Bless you.
Bless you.
It's a difficult... Bless you. It is a difficult thing to track over time at 50% of the value, so we do usually look to their help for that.
Thanks, Peter. Are there other questions on this one from the public? Any questions from the board? I know you've seen this before.
And so what we will be looking for from the board for each one is a motion to January 9th public...
We need to move this to public hearing, exactly.
I make a motion to move this to public hearing for January 9th.
Great. We have first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who do we have for alternate? Sorry.
So Paul Vance is not here.
David and...
And Joe Cubitt, so...
So you guys can both vote.
David for Paul Vance and Emily for Joe Cubitt.
Thanks. I just realized that as we were taking that vote. So just to be clear, can we just vote again? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or opposed? Okay, thank you.
And if anybody's interested, I did bring two printed copies. It's relatively lengthy, so I didn't print a ton of them, but you're welcome to take them.
Do they have the color on them?
They do.
I'll...
Yep.
Do you want to go on to your next?
Sure. Yep, let's...
When you have time.
Yep, that works. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
The next time we do this, can we paginate the work, so we know what page...
So number the pages, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you.
It'll be a year from now, so remind me.
I'll remember.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to talk... We will go back to R2 residential setbacks.
Just get the right spot pulled up. Okay. And so this is a change in the setbacks that is relative to R2 and the sections of R1 that do not have water and sewer at their lots. As most of you are aware, we have for at least a couple of decades, I think, if not far longer, had a unique side yard setback scenario where there's a minimum of 20 feet required for a side yard setback with an aggregate of 50 feet between the two side yards. So that can be made up of any combination, whether it's 22 on one side and 28 on the other, or 25 and 25, or 20 and 30. This has presented some unique hardships for folks when trying to lay out structures on their property. It has not appeared to have a tangible benefit. It sort of works out luck of the draw, whether you're the neighbor that gets 20 feet, or whether you're the neighbor on the other side that gets 30 feet. And I have not been able to find the reason for why this was put into place initially. So we've talked about this a couple of years and mixed it in previous years when we've had too many things on the list. So what we would... What we have discussed proposing is reducing it simply to a 20-foot side yard setback. And that is, I think at one point, we had questions about why not make it a 25-foot and to sort of split that difference. And the reasoning really is that we have a substantial number of properties that have already utilized their 20-foot setback, and we would really be catapulting a... I don't have an exact number, but probably 50% or more into legal nonconforming status where their structures being at 20 feet if we were to go anything greater than that.
Thanks, Adam. Good summary. Are there questions from the board on this? Okay, from the public, any questions on this one? Yeah, if you can just come up, Steve, to the mic, if you don't mind, just so we can record the audio. Thank you. And just turn it on then when you're up there. Thank you.
Steve Root, resident of New London. How many R2 lots in town are would-be nonconforming or grandfathered as nonconforming lots? They're smaller than the two-acre minimum.
That are smaller than two acres. I don't...
Percentage-wise, guess?
So the lot size wouldn't be changing?
No, I understand.
Okay. I don't know, Steve.
It's a substantial number, though, isn't it?
It is. I mean, when you look at, like, Lamson Lane and places that are all R2 and basically all of our waterfront is R2, there's a very small portion on the Big Lake that's ARR. But all around Messer Pond, Lamson Lane, almost all of those lots are nonconforming R2 lots of less than two acres.
So this would allow a little more leeway on development of those kinds of lots?
Potentially.
Yeah, okay. I don't know if it's material, but I think it's important to keep in mind that we have a lot of R2 lots, but they're not all two acres and up. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yep, thank you. Are there other comments or questions from the public on this one? Okay, and then going once again for the board. Any comments, questions? I know we've talked about this a number of times, as Adam said, over the years, so it's familiar to many of us. Okay, so then is there a motion to move this to public hearing?
We'll make the motion to move it to public hearing on the...
January 9th.
9th.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstaining? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I think we can... And on the agenda, the cluster one was eliminated from the list. I'm not sure if it got overwritten, but I think that they're really similar, so we'll maybe go through both of them at the same time. Does that work? The potential amendments to the cluster and to the PUD. So for both cluster and PUD, we have a minimum lot size of five acres for the overall development. In the PUD overlay district, we don't have many five-acre lots left, plainly put, and so it stands in the way of potential small infill condominiums. So when we look at places like the old hospital condominiums or the Barton condominiums, I'm trying to think if there's any other examples, Emily, if you're... Can you think of any? That are on small in-town lots, conversions of large existing structures, and they've provided a really diverse housing opportunity for folks looking for a small, modest condominium. And so this would essentially eliminate the barrier for that potential to exist. There is a sort of backdoor way of... So if you had a five-family residence on a one-acre lot that was a rental property, if the property owner approached the planning board to subdivide into a condex, so condo units within it, as long as nothing was changing to the built environment and the layout of the building, other than the ownership structure, a court case in the eighties tells us that we have to approve that subdivision of the condominium. And so you'll remember back, this is what we had to do at Bar Harbor when the bank approached us about subdividing the ownership between the... What do they call that separate building? Carriage house. The carriage house building and the actual bank branch. And so this would, you know, eliminate that backdoor that can get there anyways, but right now, we sort of make them go aroundabout manner to get there. Specifically to the cluster subdivision, we had proposed amending the buffer strip to a 50-foot buffer from a 100-foot buffer around the perimeter. And I guess maybe that's a pausing point on the cluster section?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, since they're closely tied, but they are separate. So comments or questions from the board on that, what Adam just laid out, including the drop to 50 from 100, like we talked about before?
And just a reminder, the context of the reduction in the cluster was that we don't have any setbacks for a residential house greater than 50 feet now, that just because that house is in a cluster subdivision, it's still an approved use in the underlying zoning district, and a cluster does not allow you any additional density. It just means that the houses can be on individual lots that are smaller than the underlying zoning district, as long as there is common area set aside that cumulatively totals what the development would need.
Yep, good reminder. Thank you, Adam.
And no, this is also... Sorry, keep going. But part of this also is that if we have a lot that's smaller than five acres that we are trying to allow infill cluster or PUD on, 100-foot buffer around the perimeter of a lot chews up a substantial amount of land. So if you're trying to do this on a three-acre parcel, you really probably could not make it work with 100-foot buffer.
Okay. Questions from the board? Comments, anybody? Okay. What about from the public? Are there questions or comments on this one? Yeah, Steve, come on up.
Steve Root, resident, once again. I recall that there was a development on the Beaulieu property proposed by Continuum, and they came to the ZBA at a time... I was not on the ZBA at the time, but I was at the meeting, and they had overlooked this buffer requirement, which is not waivable under the workforce housing. And...
(noise)
Pardon me. Sorry about that.
Want to wish you good luck.
I could have picked up. So at the time, the Hilltop neighbors were very opposed to that proposal, and so I'm wondering if you can explain to me what the impact of this is on that particular property. Now, that was a planned unit development, I think, or not? My regulation is not...
They never got to a point where they actually filed an application that I'm aware of. I think we had a conceptual meeting with them. At that point, I'm not sure that it would have actually been a planned unit development, because I don't think they were actually intending to sell the units individually. I think they were going to retain ownership under multifamily, so I think it would have just been a multifamily development. That... Under workforce housing, I'm trying to remember at that point, what the regulation would have still allowed the planning board, the latitude to reduce the buffer, I believe.
I don't think so. I think it was an oversight in the regs that didn't allow that. It allowed everything else, but I may be wrong.
If... So if a cluster subdivision were to want to go there now, though, I think that's like seven and a half acres, I think, there. So they could have a cluster of three houses, because it's R2, so two acres per house. So technically, you know, they could then go up to 50 feet from the property line with three houses. I would think that's somewhat unlikely, just given that the purpose behind a cluster subdivision is to try to reduce your infrastructure. So I would think that they would be putting them mostly down on the Newport Road side of things to try and build the shortest roads that they have to pay for, so that hopefully it wouldn't actually have an impact on it. But potentially, they could build 50 feet closer to the north boundary for those three houses.
Okay.
But if they were to simply subdivide into three individual lots, they could probably go down to 25 feet or 15.
I don't know if they have enough frontage for that.
I think they do have like seven or 800 feet of frontage.
Okay. In any event, my point is to alert you to the sensitivity that Hilltop in particular, there were a lot of people very opposed to heavy development of that piece of land.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Are there other comments or questions from the public on this? And last chance for the board. Anyone? Comments, questions? Okay. So do we have a motion to move this to public hearing?
So moved.
Tie for a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstaining? Okay, thank you.
All right. So then wrapping up the proposed modifications of the planned unit development would be to, again, eliminate that five-acre underlying size. And then to... In this section, we had proposed to eliminate the 75-foot setback to the underlying setback of that zoning district, so that would be specific to where they fell. And then the last component that we discussed changing, and this is a component that did not appear in previous year's discussion, it's become topical in the last year, and Anne and Steve can tell you as zoning board members that they heard a case on this this summer, where we had previously required planned unit developments who are in the water precinct or on the sewer lines to connect to those systems. And now, obviously, that is not possible in all scenarios. And so the zoning board issued a variance in July of the summer to Continuum to be able to use their own wells. It seems like this may continue to be a barrier. I would say it's almost always in the developer's best interest to use the public utilities when they can. It's certainly cheaper in the long run, and so I think that that safeguard is likely there, that they will connect when they can. But in scenarios where that's not feasible, removing this barrier would make sense.
Yeah, good explanation, Adam. So from the board, comments, questions on this one? Okay. From the public, questions or comments on this with Adam's explanation at your wit, at your backs?
Plenty of seats in the front row, Steve.
Right.
So why would you not simply provide that it needs to be in the water precinct? And the reason I said end of the sewer with the election then of the developer, because by eliminating this, you're essentially throwing open planned unit development to a much wider area in town.
The overlay boundaries are not changing.
But am I not correct that within the overlay boundaries, the water precinct, sewer precinct is actually a much smaller part? Or is the overlay boundary actually coextensive with both water and sewer availability?
I think it's... Let me turn it on. Bear with me for a second. I'm going to get the sewer maps on, too. Let's see if we can get something a little more legible than that. Hold on. Let's turn the Aquifer off. So this red hatching here is the planned unit overlay. And then these dots are the sewer mains. And then, actually, I think we have the water precinct on here now with the fire hydrant data. Okay, so of course, everything's red, but did you see the little... Probably not. It's not very legible up there. But you can see everywhere that there's a little fire hydrant is more or less where the water precinct goes. So I'm not sure that there's really an area in the planned unit development... Oh, sorry. That isn't served by water and sewer.
I'm not seeing it that... Let's just talk sewer, because the water precinct is large, and they won't serve a large part of that. I happen to know, I get a water bill, and they won't hook me up. But the sewer, it doesn't look like it's anywhere near all over that hatched area, is it? I mean, I see a red line running down sort of to the bottom there, and to the left of it is a large area. Up in the upper area is a large area. So I... Are you telling me that this won't have the effect of making planned unit development more readily done all over this area?
I think it could potentially open the door up. However, I mean, when you look at these properties that all have conservation easements on them that are... Don't have the sewer going by right here. I mean, on paper, it may open them up, but then we know in practical terms that they're really... Whether or not they're in the planned unit development, they're not going to be able to be utilized that way with the conservation easements on the Messer Farm.
No, Messer Farm is only one part of that area, I think. My proposed solution would be to... And this would have solved the problem for the variance that we saw this summer, is that if you're in the water precinct, then you're in the water precinct. And if you can hook up to the sewer, then you have access, but it's not required that you actually do it. It was the requirement that they actually get water from the water precinct that was the problem, because the water precinct said, "We won't supply you." So my suggestion is not that you strike this whole thing, but that you make... You simply change it to being in the water precinct or having access to the sewer. Thank you.
You can ask the board.
Okay. So are there comments from the board on that notion that Steve floated?
Would you replace?
Bill, can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, speak. He doesn't have a mic.
Well, here, take it on.
Thanks.
Would you please articulate what Steve just suggested we do?
So...
I've looked at this and don't see how that solves the problem.
So my understanding, and Steve, jump in if I don't say this right, but is that you're simply required that they be in the water precinct, not that they hook up to the water precinct? So it would be all planned unit developments be within the New London Springfield Water Precinct?
Yes, and have access to the sewer.
And have access to the sewer is what he said, so in case people couldn't hear him.
They can't have access to the sewer.
Yeah, come on up, Anne.
Anne Bedard. They can't have access to the sewer without a lot of expense. I mean, anybody in the town could hook up to the sewer if they want to put in numerous pump stations and blah, blah, blah. Once you get off Main Street, you're dealing with slopes to get it up to the main that goes over to Centipede. So saying that these people in this area could come on the sewer is a little unrealistic for the PUD. They'd have to be an onsite sewer system.
Anne, would the... Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Would the alternative be less expensive, then? Putting on, you know, handling their own...
When... So, let's see. When the development behind Hanaford's, et cetera, et cetera, came on, they were going to go on water and put in their own septic system because they didn't think they could get on the sewer. Came to light, they could get on the sewer, now they can't get on the water. So that just absolutely reversed itself. That's unusual that they could... That would be able to reverse itself. The sewer doesn't go beyond literally the hospital on County Road until you get to Highland Ridge, which put in their own pump station to get a force main up to the first manhole at Gravity.
And if the twin pines and Continuum projects come to fruition, there will be a bit of extended sewer line on County Road. They'll sort of start to...
Not Twin Pine, but Continuum.
Well, Twin Pines, it does a little... Extends it very modestly, because it'll actually join into the hospital and go across, but...
Correct.
Does anyone know the history? And Anne, you may be the... With your work in the Sewer Commission at that point, the original boundary for PUD, why it was drawn the way it was for areas like the Messer property that were not conserved at that point to be included, but then to have a requirement for sewer... I mean, I don't know if at that time, at that point, the understanding was that it's in the PUD, the sewer is extendable, and a developer could extend it to those... it to those locations if they wished, or?
I, I think they could. It would be cost prohibitive to do it in many of those areas.
Because of the terrain.
Because of having to get it uphill. Country Club has three pump stations to get their condos up here, their sewer up here. And that hits a gravity line at the corner of Gould Road and...
Siemens.
Siemens Road. That's the first gravity line for them.
I think what Mr. Root is proposing is if that change does not further, does not allow further development to the extent of the PUD crosshatching that everybody's seeing, the way we have it written allows further development to the extent of the PUD. So really, what, what the difference between the two is, is the way it's proposed currently, any of the hatched area, regardless of sewer, you would be able to bring forth a PUD proposal to the planning board. If you were to modify the language, then basically the, the sort of more restricted area that's overlapped on top of the hatched area would still stay in place. So it's, it's really the difference between, the language that we have now allows PUDs to occur in areas where they currently can't because of the multiple sets of restrictions. Is that a good summary, Adam?
Say it again.
I think so, but I wouldn't mind you saying it again.
The way we have it proposed, any place in the hatched area, a PUD could come before the planning board. Somebody could propose a PUD in anything that's hatched. Mr. Roots proposed language change. That's not the case. It would be just as restrictive as it currently is right now, because it would have to both be in the hatched area and where sewer is available. Or water.
I think the summary is correct. Whether or not it would be just as restrictive, I think, would be somewhat up for debate, because they could potentially extend the sewer line. I get that the economics may not work, but the feasibility, the technical feasibility may be there.
Right.
Right. Is that, is that a fair characterization?
But, I mean, if money is no issue, you could do it from anywhere. So to, to have that in there doesn't necessarily seem like it makes sense, right? Because if you, if you put it in there and you need seven pump stations, then it can be done.
Sure, it would be assumed.
So I don't, I guess what I, how would you determine it? Or who would determine it?
Jeremy, if what you're saying is true, why was the PUD district, overlay district, designed the way it was when it wasn't within the lines, wasn't reachable by all the sewer lines?
That would, that would, and I, my history, it doesn't go back that far, but it isn't necessarily that both of those were done in tandem. The hatched area overlay could have been come up with first, and then later in the zoning ordinance, it could have been added to further restrict, or regulate, rather, that it needed to be accessible to the sewer, and that you did have to hook up. Those two could have been, come up separately.
Well, but that had to have been in that order.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the question that Adam had for Anne earlier about that, the sort of history there.
And I don't know if at some point it also included the seasons in the PUD. I mean, somehow the seasons was legally developed.
So I don't real, excuse me, I don't really remember when the sewer tried to extend the sewer to four areas. Knights Hill was in one of them, picking up Olive County Road, down around Little Lake Sunapee was one of them, excuse me, down around Pleasant Lake was one of them, and there was a fourth. And they, they all got voted down. And that was...
1990s?
Yeah, somewhere near, yeah, early 1990s. Now, when that, those hash marks got put on, I don't know. But that doesn't go up over Knights Hill, so.
Yeah, Steve, come on back up.
So what we have here is a proposal which is driven originally by the problem of the water precinct, not saying to people who might otherwise, developments that might otherwise have expected to get water that did not get water. Sewer isn't a problem. And that is to say, if you would like to hook up to the sewer and it's accessible for reasonable money, you're gonna do it. So I'm not sure why we strike this whole provision as opposed to just the water part of it, or, in other words, require hooking up to the sewer, but require only being in the water precinct. Having said that, I, I'm not here to say that, that, you know, it's, it's valuable, useful, or important for the PUD area to really be restricted to where the sewer is. But I think it's disingenuous to just strike this and not recognize what's really going on, is you're making a significant change. And so I'm willing to be persuaded that it's okay, that the whole area should be more readily developable for planned unit developments. And so I don't want to sound like I'm here to say that all that crosshatching is somehow a mistake.
Are there thoughts from the board on this, comments? Are there other comments from the public? Trying to get a sense here of what the board would like to do in terms of what we have. Are there, is there any kind of interest in amending? Go ahead, Bill.
Well, actually, as, you know, now that Steve has brought this up, you know, I, I think if the fire depart, fire chief was here, he would want the fire protection purposes part left also.
So I don't, I do think it's important, though, just to realize that it's not necessarily saying that they have to provide fire protection services. It's saying that that water has to come from the water precinct. Fire protection services would have to, by fire code, be taken care of as part of the development process. This is just the source of that water.
So you'd have to have a cistern or something.
Correct.
I've said you'd have to have some other source of water onsite if you didn't have it.
If you didn't have it for fire protection?
Meaning if you didn't have, if you weren't hooked up to town water for fire protection, you'd have to have some onsite means of, of fire protection water. You'd have to have a cistern or some big storage or something like that.
I mean, there are even dry systems, I think.
Yeah, I can think about that.
But the farm like Harry's now has on Bog Road, which required, right, very common.
So Bill, do you, I mean, what's your thought in response to what Adam said? Do you feel like we need to change that, to leave that part in, or what's your sense?
No, I guess I'm, you know, given what Harry's done down off Bog Road and Paul Farm, no, we don't need water for fire suppression.
They have to do something.
Have to do something, but they don't need water.
But that's not based on this, they have to do something, they have to do something anyway.
I, I...
And it does, I mean...
I yield to Anne's comment.
If they're not using a public water supply, it does create a large barrier for sprinkler system, because obviously that was a primary question of twin pines and the initial development of the water situation. And if they couldn't use the precinct water for fire suppression, they likely would not have been able to move forward with the project because of the volume of water that you have to have in tanks onsite. So you have to have, I forget what it was, like... Yeah, it's substantial storage volume for a sprinkler system if you have wells versus if you're in a pressurized water system. So not to say there's not additional hurdles if you were to use a well system to power sprinklers, but it would, the requirement for sprinklers to exist would still be there by fire code.
Yep. Okay, so then going back to the earlier question of how do we, as a board, feel about the comments that Mr. Root has made and the discussion we've had since then? Is there an appetite for keeping what we have? Is there an interest in tweaking it somehow? What's your pleasure?
Excuse me. Sorry. When we looked at the maps earlier, and as Adam alluded to tonight, there aren't a lot of areas that are both in the hatch but not served. Sort of when we drilled down into it and looked at it, kind of, area by area. So I don't necessarily think it's a huge increase in area to allow further PUD development to meet the boundary that's already been established by the striking of number nine for the, the requirement of water and sewer service. That's just my opinion.
Are there other comments? So it sounds like, if I'm taking the temperature right here, that there's not much interest from the board in amending what we have.
Amending that we're...
Meaning that we, changing what we're proposing here, yeah, keeping number nine struck, essentially, is the, is the feeling I'm getting, but I'm looking for hand signals or smoke signals or whatever people have.
Appropriate.
Let's find out. I hope that we adopt the language, adopt deleting section nine, paragraph nine.
Is there a second?
Second, and everything else that we changed.
Right, then, yeah, not just nine, but the, right, all the existing proposals.
Right.
Correct, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you.
So without further ado.
Yeah, exactly, and the moment you've all been waiting for.
So I know probably everyone in this room has been through this spiel a few times, but for the benefit of the record, we will, we'll go through the, the whole piece again. So as part of the work to review the accessory dwelling unit regulations that have been in place since 2016, a component was added to restrict the short-term rental of the accessory dwelling unit, not of the primary unit, but of the accessory dwelling unit. So the first component of this would, that would need to be added is a definition of short-term rental, because we, further on, will suggest using that term. And so that definition is suggested to be an accessory use of a residential dwelling unit rented for a fee for a period of less than 90 days. And the less than 90 days was chosen specifically to hopefully not conflict with potential 90-day housing contracts for traveling nurses, traveling OTs, and the different traveling healthcare providers that work on a 90-day rotation. The next portion there, under the definition of accessory dwelling unit, adds, to modify it to not be just an attached accessory dwelling unit, but to also add in a detached accessory dwelling unit, so that it would now read, an accessory dwelling unit is a residential living unit that is within or attached to a single-family dwelling, or detached from a single-family dwelling. And then in that vein, the next modification would be to allow one attached accessory dwelling unit and one detached accessory dwelling unit per single-family unit. So this would be essentially to allow up to two accessory dwelling units on a property. But if you are to have two, one can be attached and one detached, not two detached, not two attached, one of each. And that is with the exception of units, it's a little further down, but it's good to just, since we're on the topic, the exception of units within the Shoreland Overlay District, in which case they will only be allowed one unit total. They would then be, have the flexibility between an attached or a detached, but not the, the two cumulatively. So there's a modification of just making structures plural for the potential of, of multiple structures existing. This adds in that ADUs shall not be used as short-term rentals, as we've previously defined. An adjustment of the number of bedrooms to three bedrooms from the restriction of the two-bedroom. This is partially to provide some flexibility for family units, but then also acknowledging that in the last three years, a substantial number of the population now works from home, and having more flexible space for home offices. Maybe it's a couple where each needs a home office, maybe it's a couple with a child and one needs a home office to work from home, but providing some latitude there. Additionally, allowing some increase in square footage to 1,250 from 1,000 square feet as the maximum finished interior living space. And as we discussed, that would not include the exterior entrance ways if you, if they are not finished interior living space. As we have had in the regulations since 2016, we require one off-street parking space per bedroom unit, since we would now be allowing three-bedroom units, but we wouldn't necessarily need to require three parking spaces. As even a regular, single-family detached house that can have as many bedrooms as it's septic or sewer can support, we only require those to have two spaces. So we've added in the cap here of no more than two parking spaces per ADU shall be required. Of course, if space and landlords allow, they could add additional parking, but we would not require that. We eliminated the piece that required attached accessory dwelling units have their doors either to the, the side or the rear of the property. This has proved somewhat difficult over the years to massage buildings to allow for, and the, the topic has come up that it's sort of the classic New England vernacular to have, you know, a house that was added on to five times that has three front doors. And so if there's a second door to apartment over garage, it really doesn't change the street aesthetic of the sort of typical rambling farmhouse with L. and, and barn. And then this last section is specific to the detached accessory dwelling units, that the placement of the unit shall not adversely affect the traffic on roads or safety of the pedestrians, and will not otherwise create a safety hazard, and it shall not be considered an additional dwelling unit for the purposes of determining minimum lot size or density. And I just want to confirm that the section about not being in the Shoreland Overlay District was in here, because... Where's it, Jeremy? I'm sorry.
It's the same center that you were reading.
Okay. I'm sorry, the, okay, we will make sure that that gets officially, yeah, it just should be underlined in red, so the, the formatting was lost, so I'll make sure that that gets done before the posting for the public hearing.
Thanks, Adam. Maybe before we jump into the board's comments on this, I don't know, Peter, did you want to, and I apologize to put you on the spot, but did you want to say anything about this since your commission did so much work with us on that, and obviously before us? Okay. Just wanted to give you the option.
Do we have time?
No, okay. I mean, which you can answer them in the course of things, but I just wanted to give you the chance. Are there, thanks, Adam, for walking through those changes. I know the board is well familiar with these, we've talked about them many times, but are there questions or comments? Okay, from the public, questions or comments about these proposed, Steve, come on down.
So, one question, you didn't, I'm, I'm coming in a little late here, I'll admit, so I haven't been to any previous meetings, but what is the rationale for authorizing detached ADUs?
Yeah, so we've had a lot of questions regarding the ability to build ADUs from folks who seem to be mostly motivated by the housing of either their children, who are moving home with their grandchildren, and oftentimes they don't want to be sharing a, a wall with a slightly more rambunctious sort of family unit, and they want to have some privacy. And by folks who are needing to move their elderly parents to be closer to them, and in not cases, they're not all elderly, but, you know, parents, and they also want to maintain some privacy. maintain some privacy and allow them to have their own independent living space on the property without being physically attached.
Okay, having heard that, I don't hear anything that justifies two ADUs on each lot in town, tripling the density of R1, R2, and every other district. To me, it doesn't make sense to say that we're allowing one ADU attached and one AU detached, ADU detached, you're just allowing 2,500 square feet of living space to be added to a lot of lots, and as I mentioned earlier, many of those lots are not two-acre residential R2 lots, they're small. And so I view that as a highly controversial change here, and would say at worst, it should just be one ADU on each lot. So. I have a separate question, as long as I'm up here. So, short-term rentals of ADUs would be forbidden. So there are already a lot, some ADUs in town, I won't say a lot, and I don't know if any of those are short-term rentals. Have you considered the impact on existing ADUs, and what's your thought on that?
Yeah, so I believe since 2016, we've had a total of 14 accessory dwelling units go through the process. I am aware of one, and I've shared this with the Housing Commission and the Plating Board, one that has toggled back and forth between nursing, traveling nurses, and then, so if a traveling nurse is... Oftentimes, they re-up, so they start with a three-month contract, and then they, you know, they stick around, and they're here six months or nine months. And then in between that, because they have not necessarily advertised for another longer-term tenant, not knowing whether the nurse would stick around, they sometimes fill in the gaps with short-term rentals. And that particular unit, right now, is being rented to one of the first graduate students at Colby Sawyer, and so it's not being rented in a short-term basis, but they have... It's a very small unit, it's like 375 square feet, so they have used it as a short-term.
So I'm correct, though, they're not grandfathered under any language here, so they would be forbidden from continuing to do what they've been doing?
I think that is correct.
Okay. Had another thought, but it's eluding me. Okay, but my main point is that, and this, you know, some of the members of the board remember, in 2016, we had extensive discussions, and I was opposed to detached ADUs at the time, but on grounds that, in my view, it doesn't address workforce housing in any significant way. In this town, you can't build housing economically for workforce housing, you force can build housing as carriage houses and things like that, and there's plenty of properties where those already exist. In fact, I mean, I recall that we recognized that there were a lot of things that were almost ADUs but not quite. They left off some of the cooking stuff, and who knows if they have a hot plate. Those can now be readily converted to ADUs, I would think, potentially.
If the property owner is not using that house as their dwelling, then they still wouldn't be able to, because the property owner still has to be the legal dwelling of one of the units.
But is there a sense or a rationale that this is a significant benefit to workforce housing? Because I'm representing my view that that's pie in the sky.
Yeah, I mean, and I think, I don't know if you were here when Frank and I were having this conversation last week, too, at the end of the zoning board meeting, but I think a lot of times, the actual accessory dwelling units that are constructed to house members of the workforce are not necessarily random members of the workforce, and so it's not necessarily that the financial payoff has to be there, it's, you know, a family member or somebody who wants to move back and they can't afford to, and so that there's not always going to be that economical, that economic payoff, but it does provide a diversity in housing option for somebody who may not qualify under the traditional workforce housing income limitations, but still can't afford to live in New London.
Yeah, so I submit that you should not authorize two ADUs on each property. As a middle ground proposal, you could designate the parts of the town that our town plan calls for more intensive development to be the places where multiple ADUs might be authorized. In 2016, I think we were kicking around the idea of detached ADUs being allowed where water and sewer was available, just to bring up another topic. But I think, I would be very much opposed to every lot in town being authorized to now have a detached ADU and an attached ADU in the housing unit. That's very much a radical departure from our zoning ordinance. Thanks.
Just to maybe summarize from our last meeting, that might be helpful, too, Steve. We had conversations about if it were like a small lot on Barrett Road, for example, that the physical constraints of a lot may actually further self-regulate what's feasible for somebody, that, you know, we may, the ordinance may say that they could have an attached and a detached, but the actual practical application of that may stand in their way when they actually can't physically lay out six parking spaces and at the same time add on extra footprints. So there was some discussion in the, you know, the small dense areas may not be able to support two units.
Yep.
When they come to us for a variance, and we deny it, you watch the housing board appeals with the stock lines. So I wouldn't depend on setbacks as a reason for that.
Okay, we have a couple of comments from the board, so I'll start in order. Jeremy, you were first, and then Mary Ann.
There were a couple of things that I wanted to address. Adam hit one, is that it isn't just workforce housing, it's a diversity of housing, so I'll just leave that alone, because Adam did better than me, for certain. Then there's a bunch of reasons for detached that we didn't really identify, is that there's a bunch of existing stock that actually is not being used. So in lieu of building something onto your house, you could actually use a garage and the space that's already above it. So there's quite a bit of existing stock, which would actually be less cost than building something completely new. So just assuming that detached is a new construction, you know, I don't think that's accurate. There's a lot of barns, outbuildings, garages around town. Last time we did this, in, I don't know, 2016 or 17, we drove up and down the road picking out the ones that are in the back, right on Main Street, that were garages and are now ADUs of some variety. And then to add to that, it's also fairly self-regulating, which Adam added, and I think when you take all of the self-regulating things, you know, you have to be able to provide at a minimum two parking spaces. It still has to comply with all the setbacks, and the owner has to live in one of the units that's on the property, that there's a slew of self-regulating... Septic is another one Anne brought up when we were discussing this between both boards. So I think, you know, if I can quote from, you know, and self-regulating, we've seen two per year. So to sort of quote from 2017, "They're not popping up like mushrooms all over the place." So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Jeremy. So, Mary Ann, did you want to talk?
I just, real quick, wanted to clarify, it's a maximum of two parking spaces, where you said minimum, just so that, for the record.
Yep, thanks, Adam.
Imagine that, I self-corrected here. Steve, you mentioned, or at least I think I heard you say, that really there's no reason to do this, because even if we were to do the ADUs attached and detached... I just lost my train of thought. Let me start again. There may not be official workforce housing categories for the ADUs, but de facto, they very well may turn out to be that, and that's one of the things we're going for also. When I was on the library board, and we were looking for a library director, we offered the job to a very fine candidate, and she turned it down because she could not find a place to live. And that was tragic, really, because she was a very, very good candidate. And I do think that in addition to in-law apartments, or, you know, children who are moving home or whatever, these would also function as opportunities for workforce, for employees to take positions in New London, in places that they can afford. When you talk to, I don't know if you've been in some of the meetings, where the president of New London Hospital says they've got like 57 positions open over there, because they can't fill the positions, because the people don't have a place to live. So I think this endorses the whole idea of workforce housing, maybe not officially, but certainly de facto, in my opinion.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Are there other comments from the board? Peter, you look like you had your hand up before, did you want to say something?
I simply wanted to address the point on density that Mr. Root raised. If you think of it conceptually, an attached ADU is a reuse of an existing structure. It is true, you could start with a greenfield site and build a house and make it bigger by virtue of adding an attached ADU, but it's more likely, given structures that exist today, and the downsizing interest of the older population, such as me perhaps, that the attached ADU would be inside an existing structure and not an increase in density. The detached ADU could be an increase in density, that encourages the development of housing, a diverse housing, a smaller-sized housing that we need so badly, whether it's specifically for workforce or in generally just good rental housing. But the detached unit is there to really provide infill housing, which is what happens when you need more housing in an area closer to the core, is you add infill housing, some of which will be in existing structures, as Jeremy mentioned.
Thanks, Peter. John, did you want to come up, you had a quick question, and then Steve?
The rental would be 91 days or more, is that what we're going for?
The way it's written, John, is that short-term would be less than 90 days, so 89 or less.
Okay, two days off. On paragraph EI, it says one attached ADU, should we have and/or, or did you maybe already make that correction? I was thinking one detached ADU and/or one detached ADU, because you can have one of each, or your choice.
Yeah, that's good, thanks, John.
And then I had a question on that same section, E, and it's a roman numeral V, it says the ADU shall have a separate 911 address. Would that mean that the attached would be called, let's say, the main house is one, it'd be 1A?
Well, not in all cases. So I'm not the town employee that is certified in 911 addressing, it's actually a real certification. And so Cara has taken the courses for E911, and is the one that assigns the number. Each case is unique as far as exactly how it works, and it has to do with like the driveway placement and the entrance, and so it would be on a case-by-case basis, but there would be some unique number between the two units.
Okay, and would that hold true for the detached?
Correct.
Yep.
So should we add that in also, and put DA-DU and ADUs should have a separate 911 address?
I mean, they're both ADUs, either whether they're detached or detached, so I think we thought it was okay just to leave it as any ADU, regardless of whether it's attached or detached. I mean, I see your point, but I think it's still...
Just for clarification, if somebody builds one, they say, "Well, I have it on my ADU, I don't need it on my DA-DU."
Right, I mean, I think all of these spots here, John, where it says just ADU between, I guess it's between numeral three and nine, 10, includes a two, I mean, those are all of the overarching standards that apply to all ADUs, whether attached or detached. So I think it makes sense to just leave it at ADU.
Okay.
Well, you could, one thing you could do is take the first word and make it any.
Yep.
And that will accomplish what you're trying to do.
I think it's the same thing, but the way I read it, they'd be the same.
Yep.
Under definitions, it's a definition, it's a definition of an ADU, so if you actually look at B, the definition is of an ADU, and it's either detached or attached, so either or of those are an ADU. It's not just two things.
All right, so we will leave that.
Yep, I think there, I think it's two ways to say this.
But we will, and thanks for the and/or, John, I'll get there.
Yeah, thank you, John. Steve, you had another comment?
I just want to say that I acknowledge that housing for workforce and for people who are starting out their careers, or lower-income people, is a vital problem. My point is that I don't believe that authorizing a detached and a detached ADU on every property in town that's residential is a solution to Mr. Bonin's point. I own a barn, and converting that to living space would be brutally expensive and not economic. It might be fine if I wanted my son to live there, I might do it, so it's not without benefit, but it's not a panacea. Secondly, I wanted to take a point that Peter mentioned. He mentioned development in the core areas, and that's one of my points, is that authorizing a detached ADU plus an attached ADU in every zone in town is not focused on the core areas, and could be much improved by authorizing one or the other in the core areas of town, R2, R1, where water and sewer is, there are ways to do that. So I urge you to pull in this proposal and make it less onerous.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, Anne.
So I'm going to put on a totally different hat. I've taken care of two families in New London whose parents are, have aged in place at home. There are numerous other examples of this going on. And they have caregivers who need a place to live, who are working at Hitchcock and are working for them. And they, the caregivers, don't want to live with their clients all day and go to work someplace else all night, or vice versa. And I can only think that this trend is going to continue to increase, because we are all trying to age at home. Nobody wants to move into a unit outside of their home. It's an argument you run into every elderly person. So, I'm going to give you the examples, so the two that I was involved with, their families are now, the parents are now deceased. The one family looked at converting their downstairs unit, which would have been very easy to do, into an ADU, and one of the daughters was going to live, move to town and live upstairs That did not work out for that family, because they were going to make the one daughter buy the whole unit out, which she could not afford to do. The other situation is that basically they have converted the downstairs to an ADU, and they're using it illegally. They have not announced it. And I'm not turning them in, because they need the help, they've got skilled help, they need skilled help. So that's what I think where the trend is going towards for housing, is probably for that type of accessory dwelling need.
Thank you. Rich, did you have a comment?
So I'm not sure if I missed it, but with the known water limitations that we have as determined by the state, I didn't see, is there anything that would be able to gate dwelling units because potentially hitting against the water limitations?
So the Water Precinct's opinion to date on a residential unit is that they can continue to absorb, you know, the three or four connections that they are applied for each year. You know, of the 14 accessory dwelling units that we've had, just running through the list in my mind, I'm, I would say 90% or more have been on private water supply as is. They're just in the sort of peripheries of town. To tell you the truth, I'm having a hard time thinking of one that's on the Water Precinct. So I don't think it's a huge concern at this point. If they got to a point where they can't connect even, you know, small apartments, which I don't think they're anywhere near that at this point, then, you know, presumably people would be in a case where they'd be looking for private water supplies anyways. But I think if we got to a point where a single apartment is going to maximum, go over the maximum that they can provide, we probably will have larger concerns at that point.
Okay. So I guess I'm, I guess maybe I'm just wondering if, it sounds like most of these dwelling units have not been in a water precinct.
Correct.
But if for some reason, you never know, world changes, remember COVID? If all of a sudden there are many that want to go into, within the precinct, could we just have, let's say, the Water Precinct has to agree to it, there's some way that they can somehow control whether or not they, there isn't some sort of unusual amount of demand at the time?
So any new connection requires an application. So they have to, they regulate their new connections?
Well, if they don't do a new connection, it's-
But it's an additional, it is a new connection though, because it's another unit. So each single family unit has, you know, they've paid their fee based on one unit because there's a service connection fee. So by adding an additional unit, an additional square footage and bedrooms and whatever else could come along with the construction of an ADU, they could be required to pay more. So there is still an application process at the Water Precinct.
So the Water Precinct will then be able to, okay, oh, okay.
And even, any building permit we get that's on the Water Precinct, regardless of if it's an ADU or something else, we notify the Water Precinct of. So they would have other means of notification too, so that if someone didn't know that they needed to file an application for the expansion of their use into an accessory dwelling unit, the Water Precinct would see that when we got the building permit for that, and they would either reach out to the customer or to us.
Okay. Can I ask something completely different?
Yep.
Not about the water. So about the need for work, certainly we have that need for workforce housing, but of course, it's not just New London, it's all of the state, it's probably all of the nation. We could do more in New London, but they may go work in Newport. I mean, so, you know, we always bring up examples, maybe they'll work at the library, but what's, there's more work probably in Newport. So I just, I think that should be somewhat considered when, when we think about whether we should be putting in all the additional dwelling units.
Yeah. And so, I mean, it's worthy to mention that we are not the only town that is working on this. Renee, that's usually here, is the housing navigator from the Upper Valley Exonium Regional Planning Commission, and she is working right now with Wilma and Newbury as well on some of their accessory dwelling unit regulations. And Field just rewrote theirs to relax and provide some more flexibility as well. And I'm sure other towns are that I just am not as aware of. So I do think it is, you know, fairly well-recognized that it is a much wider problem than just our community, and hopefully everyone will pitch in to, to make an effort as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Yeah, Karen, did you, come on up after Bill. Go ahead, Bill. No, go ahead, Bill. It's okay.
Steve, I wanted to go back and make sure I understand what you said. You wouldn't have as much trouble if there were going to be two ADUs in R1 and R2, the more dense part of the town already, but your concern would be having an extra 1,250 square feet in the ARR area. Is that the, is that the way I should interpret that?
Can you come up, Steve? Katsari, thanks.
You're getting your steps in today, Steve.
So, yes, I did, I did make that point. I still think that, that the proposal which you have for the waterfront buffer area, I'm sorry, the waterfront overlay of one ADU, one way or the other, attached or detached, would be just fine for, for the whole proposal. So I don't understand why we need two everywhere, but if the board is insistent on two ADUs, and again, I haven't really heard a rationale for two, even Anne's story, attached or a detached ADU would be what the people need.
As far as your opinion, maybe.
Okay, so, so, but, but I'm, I'm making a big stink about two ADUs on every property except for the waterfront overlay. I think that's excessive. I don't think the rationale supports it.
But I hear you saying that's only really on the very large parcels, four acres and more, which seems to me to be a whole different question about the nature of housing in New London, which if 1,250 square feet on four acres is a problem.
I, I am saying-
I may be controversial with you, but-
Okay, I am saying two things. One is I think the whole, whole idea of two ADUs is bad all over town. However, a rationale for ADUs is to infill in the more developed areas, and this proposal doesn't, doesn't do anything like that. It says all over town. So yes, I think it's a worse problem for ARR and things other than the core area of town, but I'm also saying I think it's a problem to have two ADUs authorized in town. We have, we have-
It's certainly not a worse issue because of density is the point I'm trying to make. 1,250 square feet on a four acre piece of property is not a very dense addition.
It's a house. It's another house on, on a four, we have, we have a whole zoning ordinance that's been in place for a long time, including, by the way, ADUs have been authorized since around 2001. It wasn't 2016 that they came in. 2016, we tweaked it a little. And, and we have our, our density requirements for each of those zones. We're changing it radically here. We're tripling every single lot, other than, we're doubling on the, with detached units. And so that's, that's a radical change, not, oh, well, it's four acres. Who cares if there's another 1,250 square?
Well, I only think that because the broader discussion is the times have changed and that there's no more, no more land in New London, and yet we have people who would like to live in New London, and how do we accommodate that? That's my point. It's not, you know, this isn't New London of 100 years ago. This is New London of 2023. Some, some of us might agree with you, but some people might not agree that, and that the times have changed, and we ought to be welcoming another cadre of people here. And one way to do it is to have some small houses on some of the larger properties in town. That's the philosophical argument, I think, that-
Okay. And the opening lines of the ADU thing talk about preserving the rural, the rural character of our town. I'm not sure, dotting the land with, with additional small houses as well as an attached ADU on each of the properties where our zoning ordinances has been in place for a very long time with its density requirements, its frontage requirements.
I'm only trying to clarify what you said to make clear what the difference might be.
So, so, you know, I, I understand, and when you say that people won't agree with me, I understand they won't agree with me, but I think you need to understand that there's going to be a significant difference of opinion on this proposal because it's, it's a big deal. And so when I suggest eliminating the core area, I'm inviting you to make it not such a big deal, but I think two ADUs on any lot is more than I'm going to vote for, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeremy.
Steve, can you stay there?
Jeremy had one question for you.
Can you stay there for one second? Last, last time you were on the stand, and this is, this is to Bill's point, you said restrict it to the core to make it less onerous. How is that making it less onerous? Who's it onerous on? And then seconding that, dotting the land with little buildings that are 1,250 square feet. Those four acre lots could put up 30 sheds. They could put up 10 outbuildings. You know, ARR district, they can put up barns, they can put up, I mean, you know, dotting something with little buildings doesn't necessarily mean it's the opposite of the rural character. And it actually kind of is the rural character.
Dotting the land with little buildings that have families in them. That's doubling the density of those lots, tripling if you have an attached ADU. So, so I'm not just talking about little-
So who is that onerous on?
It's contrary to the, the rural character. We'll end up looking like Massachusetts with, with-
Lots of little families is contrary to the rural character?
No, a greater density of little families. It's, it's fine. We can disagree about this, but my point is you're changing a zoning ordinance in a radical way that's been in place a long time. Maybe it's time to do it according to Bill. I personally don't believe that's the case. So this, this isn't just a little, little thing here.
So back to 2001 to 2016, when it was radically changed last time, there's been two ADUs per year. So I understand when you do the math, it comes out as the potential of tripling dwelling units in an entire town, but the reality is, is there's 14.
Excuse me, in, in 2001 and 2016, they didn't authorize detached ADUs, and there was only one ADU authorized per property. And, and so I'm standing here saying two ADUs authorized on every residential property other than the ones in the waterfront overlay is, is a, is a big change. Bill's saying that maybe it's time for a big change, but he's not arguing that it's not a big change. And so that's, that's where we're not agreeing, and I think you need to be aware that this is a big deal.
I'd like to make a comment about this. The discussion that took place six, seven years ago was just like this discussion we're having right now. And the reality of, of what has happened in the meantime betrays the kind of predictions that were made like you're predicting now, seven or, seven or eight years ago in 2016. I don't, I don't think that just being able to predict that this is, this is going, we're going to go to hell in a handbasket, that's not accurate. The accurate experience of the town is that when that, when that ordinance was changed in 2016, we now have 14 over a period of eight years that have appeared. I, I just am not convinced that changing this ordinance in the way we're proposing is going to create some kind of a massive building of little houses scattered around the town. I just, our experience doesn't allow us to assert that.
So in 2016, though, we were debating this exact issue of detached ADUs, and I was opposed to that.
Yes.
That's true. And I'm not here fighting on the detached ADUs at this point. I'm fighting on two ADUs on all the properties. Now, so since 2016, in the end, the proposal at its, at its largest was a thousand square foot footprint for attached, for detached ADUs.
Right.
And I was opposed to that. And so now we're talking about 1,250 square feet of, of living space, and I, I'm not fighting that, I'm fighting that plus an attached ADU so that you've got three on every property. And so, yes, okay, so is it a prediction of an apocalypse that, of course, isn't going to happen overnight, but our zoning ordinance has its, its density and has had requirements for a long time, and you're proposing to change that?
Yes. But eight years is, is, in the public sector is overnight. You know, we've, we've, we had all of this discussion eight years ago. The reality is that we haven't had that experience in the meantime. That's not what-
But you didn't have, but you haven't had detached ADUs in that meantime?
No, we were, we were talking about the present reality of what's allowed in the town, and at that time, the prediction was being made by you and many others that this was, that was just absolutely, hey, it was going to create this tremendous increase, and it didn't.
But it wasn't detached ADUs and it wasn't two, two on every property?
No, it wasn't. But it was, but it was the beginning of a discussion, and, and the position that you and others took at that time was it just has not happened. And therefore, I sit in the position of saying to you right now, you don't have any evidence that if we were to make the change that is being proposed here, that that in turn is going to create chaos. That's not true.
So I'm going to question your example. First of all, in 2016, the changes made in response to legislative changes to our ordinance that had been in place since 2001 were extremely minor. They were almost nothing. There were proposals, which I opposed and which didn't come to pass, to authorize detached ADUs with a thousand square foot footprint. And I said that could be three stories of 3,000 square feet, and I was opposed to it. But your example doesn't fly because nothing changed in 2016 to any significant extent. And so if not much has happened, well, it was not much had happened from 2001 to 2016. That doesn't show that making a radical change to authorize three housing units on every lot where only one plus an attached ADU is now authorized, isn't a radical change that in the long run could add to density. And so, so-
But that, that's an estimate. You're, you're suggesting that, that this is going to happen. And all I'm saying is that, that in the discussions that we had eight years ago, there was the same kind of, of concern about this was going to create lots and lots of these additional things being built onto houses and so forth and so on. It didn't happen. It hasn't happened. And therefore, I don't think that your argument that somehow or another, accepting some increase in the availability of housing for people in this town is going to create mayhem. I don't believe that. I don't think the history and the experience supports that.
Okay. So I'm not saying that it creates mayhem. I'm saying it changes our ordinance substantially in, in ways that I think are overreached because I haven't heard a good rationale for two ADUs on, on any property, but certainly not on every property other than the shoreline overlay. Why doesn't it say you could have a detached ADU of 1,250 square feet or an attached ADU, but not two? I just, and I don't think you've justified that argument as a, other than speculating that somehow this will solve workforce housing.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Which, which is a reasonable goal, to be able to have people that work in the hospital, in the college, be able to afford to live in this town. That's a reasonable goal.
That is a very reasonable goal, but that doesn't mean that this is the means to achieve it because you, even converting barns and garages is going to be brutally expensive, is it? And so I, I understand that it, it may help families to stay together, kids to be nearby, caregivers to be nearby, and that can be achieved with an attached ADU or a detached ADU on any given property.
Thanks, Steve.
Someone from the audience?
Yeah, Karen, come on up. Sorry. And then Marion.
Hello, Karen Epstein. I wanted to follow up on, I believe, an example Mr. Root gave, and I just wanted to make sure my understanding is correct, or maybe you could give me some of your experience. Seeing that we live in the core area, I think, what is described, because we're on Barrett Road and we have water and sewer, I guess I would be, if this is going to move forward, it would seem an issue of fairness that this is a problem the entire town is trying to address, that, just thinking out loud here, I haven't had time to think this through, but I'm just kind of thinking out loud, that I would not be so much in favor of just having it defined into the so-called core area. Because we are more densely packed than most, good part of the rest of the town, and how much more dense do we want to get? So along those lines, and to a point Mr. Root made, that let's say you're in one of these small lots on Barrett Road, and you put in an application for a detached dwelling unit, and it doesn't meet, like, I've been all along thinking, oh, if it's, doesn't, if it doesn't meet the setback requirements, then it's not going, it's a no-go. But there's a process by which people can appeal that, correct? And what's your sense as far as that, standing that appeal and, you know, so that they're not going to get approval as they go through the chain of appeals? That was my question in terms of trying to gauge that. Thank you.
So you're correct that they would-
going to get approval as they go through the chain of appeals? That was my question in terms of trying to gauge that. Thank you.
So, you're correct that they would, any new structure that's built would have to be built to the existing setbacks. However, there is a variance process for any component of the ordinance where they could go to the zoning board of adjustment, seeking a variance. As far as how likely they are to get the variance, I don't want to put our two zoning members in the audience on the spot, but I think it is a very case-by-case basis analysis. You know, there are examples probably of existing structures that are within the setbacks that may be looking to be modified to turned into an accessory dwelling unit, and I could see where that could maybe have an easier argument to make for a variance than an entirely new structure. But if there's something so unique about the lot that requires the reduction in setbacks to build a detached accessory dwelling unit, there may be a case that the zoning board would grant that, but it really is so specific to each individual application that it's hard to give a, you know, overarching answer. But in theory, they would be held to the same setbacks as any other building, whether that's a detached shed, whether that's your attached garage to your single-family home, any component of the structure.
Yep. Thanks, Karen. So, Mary Ann, did you want to go?
Yes. Steve, it seems that you're, if I could summarize your point of view, I wouldn't be able to address it, so I want to be sure I'm addressing the right stuff, or at least the correct stuff. How's that? It sounds like you're saying, hey, board, this is a big change. This is a huge change, and that you're very concerned that the fact that pretty much every structure, every owner would have the option of putting in an attached dwelling unit and a detached accessory dwelling unit seems excessive to you, and that in light of that, and not hearing rationale for it, you are strongly opposed to this amendment, because to a certain extent, you think it's like walking on the current ordinances with golf cleats. It's like, what's going on here? And is that, does that capture what you're saying? Okay. First of all, we are not, not aware of the significance of the change, and we debated, discussed, argued, persuaded for a long time on this, as did the Housing Commission, as did we in combined meetings. So, it's not as if we've been asleep at the wheel, not knowing that this thing is a huge change, number one. Number two, times are different than they were, and that when they, they've been different, they're different from the past 100 years, they're different from 2001, they're different from 2016. There is an epidemic of a lack of housing. And many of us have children and family members that don't have places to live. They can't afford it. And gee whiz, if we're in a position to build something, whether it's attached to the house or detached, we may very well want to do that. And whether it's expensive, or what you consider prohibitively expensive or not, it's the owner's choice to build it or not build it. And I can't stress enough the fervor by which the management of the hospital and the college speak about the challenge it is for them to run these institutions without full staff or even half-staff. So, while it says that, while you say that this is really a huge change, yeah, it really is, and yes, it's really needed, and the townspeople may not agree, but we're sure going in there thinking that they are. So, that's my point of view, and hopefully, it reflects the point of view of the board.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Yeah, Rich, did you have another comment?
Workforce housing is the main driver. There's been said that, you know, look how few dwelling units have occurred, so we shouldn't be worried about so many new ones, but then we say, but the world's changed now. So, maybe what wasn't a worry will be a worry. And we already have the building behind Pella, where there's going to be, I'm forgetting the name, behind Hannaford, is the continuum. And if, you know, if the school needs, the school has a lot of property, maybe they could do something with their property to have some housing, maybe something with continuum for the hospital, maybe they could do something for housing. But why add on top of it these changes to the dwelling units?
Yep, thanks, Rich. I would just say, I think part of our thought process was that also, when you read the research, that housing diversity, as Adam alluded to before, and more housing is helpful in general. So, whether it be workforce housing, and whether it be somebody going to a job in Newport, they might do that, but they might do that now with a regular house. But in general, if there is more housing, then that's ultimately going to be a good thing for the town. And I think that that was, that was at least, that's part of the thinking here. It's just the idea that we need more of it. And you're right that, you know, it's been alluded to a couple of times about times having changed. It could be something that, you know, needs to be amended later if we decide, if we find out that this isn't working out in a way that's favorable to the town. It's, a couple of us have talked about that tonight, just back and forth, just saying, you know, these things can be amended later on if we needed to as well, so that we have an annual, we have an annual stab at this, too. So, worth its worth.
Thank you. Are there other comments from the board? Questions? What about from the public? Anyone else, especially anyone else who hasn't had a chance to weigh in yet? Yeah, Peter, go ahead.
I would just, two things. One, I want to stress how badly we need housing. And it's not just a matter of convenience. It's not just the bakery's only open three days instead of five, or the restaurant is struggling and the service is slow, but we're talking about nurses, and doctors, and teachers, and police officers, and firefighters. It's an erosion of the quality of life here, and we need to face change in some way that makes a difference. And so far, the ADU provisions that we have are only creating precious few. So, the significant change we're talking about and trying to make a difference is a well-thought approach to detached ADUs, and that includes existing structures that could be converted and some new ones. And our hope is that it will do that. So, I just wanted to stress that. I would also add quickly that we also have not just the housing effect on our community, but also simple demographics, and that is, the demographics of our town are more older people, such as me, I'll include myself, and the younger generations, or cohorts, as they call them, are not staying or are not moving in. And the end game of that, if you say we're not going to change, is a severe erosion of our community. And we need to think about rental units, which really will help to support regeneration of younger cohorts coming to our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, Emily.
Just in case some of you are not aware of the fact that the average home in New London right now is priced at $635, we won't be able to have the younger cohorts come in and be able to afford living in this town. We've pretty much outpriced ourselves for lower prices of houses. And so, this is a good way for me, anyway, to take a look at it, to see if we can welcome people that want to be here. And I think it's a nice way to do it.
Thanks, Emily. Other comments or questions from the board?
Do you want me to summarize the two changes?
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you.
All right, so, the only two minor modifications that I have written so far, so jump in if there's something else anyone would like to change, are to add the and slash or in E numeral I, and in the same spot to change the within a shore, the shoreline overlay district properties section to red and underscored.
Thanks, Adam.
Yep.
Okay, so, as a board, if there are no other comments, is there a motion on what you would like to do?
I would like to move to bring this to a public hearing on January 6th, 9th, a few days early.
Yeah. January 9th. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Emily. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or-
I'm going to abstain, as I just had to check my card here, and it says, I'm a representative of the Board of Selectmen here. And while my personal opinion supports this motion, I feel that as a representative of the board, we have not had the opportunity to hear this discussion. There are some differing opinions here that I've not heard before, so I feel obligated to take this topic back to the Board of Selectmen, so that their full opinion is heard by the town. We do represent all of the residents of the town. Tonight's audience is heavily weighted toward the Housing Commission. They've done an outstanding job in working with the Planning Board on this, but I feel obligated to suggest that either at our meeting this Thursday night, or at our public meeting on Friday, which I know we're going to hear this topic, it's one of the topics on the agenda, or even at our next regularly scheduled meeting on the 4th of January, we'll have several opportunities to hear the whole town's version of this. If there are other people that feel as strongly as Steve does, that view ought to be heard. And so, I'm going to abstain from voting tonight on this measure.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, so, we had it all in favor, and then one abstention before moving to public hearing.
And I do just want to address real quick about the input from town, because I know the question was also brought up about the Citizens Advisory Committee on the 6th, too. And I think it's important that we stick to the public hearing process of the Planning Board to hear the feedback, and so that, though it is important to sort of, you know, talk it around casually between now and then, I want to make sure that the public input that we get is not necessarily fragmented at a whole bunch of different forums, where different members of the board may not be present to hear it, that it's at the public hearings, so that we make sure that the whole board voting on what moves forward to town meeting is present for that conversation.
And is part of the official record.
Correct.
And my goal is to be able to have the Selectmen's representative on this board support this motion at the public hearing, but I believe I do need to make sure that that's what all three people want to do.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, thanks, Adam, as well. Okay, so, as we discussed, our next meeting is Tuesday, January 9th. Are there any other, did you have any other announcements?
I don't think we have any other major announcements. Today was the deadline for the January 9th meeting, a week earlier than normal because of the Intertown not publishing the last week of the year. So, I believe we have one other application that night that we will hear first, and then get into the public hearing on the zoning amendments. I expect we will have a fairly good turnout for that application. So, other than that, you're off for the holidays, and so-
Yes, and I'd just like to reiterate one more time.
Well, I'm only off on this one meeting.
Just like to reiterate one more time, thank you to the Housing Commission for your hard work on this, and Peter for leading that. It's been really, it's been a hell of an effort, so we really appreciate it. Are there other comments from the board? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I need a motion to, yeah.
So moved.
To, we have, to disband. We have a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming.